Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, Wednesday, March 29, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Approval of the revised agenda?
Motion.
Motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions or comments from interested citizens? We had none the last time. I'm not aware of any tonight. Let me move forward. Next up is the Boses' presentation. No rest. You're right up.
So I'd like to start by introducing ourselves. I'm Deborah Hepus. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Orange Elster Boses. And with me here at the table tonight is Kerry Stroka, our Deputy Superintendent, and Mark Coleman, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance. And joining us tonight from our Board of Education is Jean Pavick. Where did Jean go? The other side. Jean Pavick, our Boses Cooperative Board President. Martha Bogart, our board member, who I have to add is a 32-year retiree of Monroe Woodbury School District. She was one of your teachers. So certainly Martha keeps the Monroe Woodbury a name in front of us at all times and is often sharing details about the district. And Larry Berger, also our board member, who happens to be a retiree of Orange Elster Boses. So many folks at Monroe know him as our former Technology Director. So thank you for taking the time for us tonight. I know that everybody's schedules are crazy busy. I'm going to ask us to pass these. Which way if that's enough? So we do have what we're calling our Budget Newsletter that we're speaking from tonight. Patrick, you didn't take one because you already called ahead for one?
I have one, yes.
Yes, I know.
With some scribbles on it.
You good? Does everybody get one? Terrific. Thanks. So on the front page, you'll see a letter from our Board President, Jean, who's with us tonight. And we would ask that you take a little time and read that over. We think it's very thoughtful. And she gives some insight on how our Board goes about putting the budget together in a very responsible manner and talking a little bit about our programs. So I'm going to just give you a little overview on the similarities and the differences first between a Boses budget and a Component District budget. So your budget is one budget, right? It's one budget with a bottom line, and from that, Patrick will determine what the tax levy will be. Our budgets are put together by program. So we have our program budgets, which each school district chooses which programs to purchase and how many students to send to our student-based programs. We also have the admin rental and capital budgets, which are... The admin budget is the piece of our budget that you will vote on. So later in April, there's one set date. Do I have that in front of me? April 20th, that by state law, all of the districts will vote on the same day. And that's the date that we have designated for our area. So that's the admin budget. There's also the rental and capital budgets, which are just that. It covers our rental budget, where we rent space to run some of our programs, and our capital budget, which for next year is the initial payment for our capital project that passed in October. So I'm going to start by asking you to flip to the second page, and I'll go over our administrative budget. So our administrative budget, even though it's different that it's carved out, it isn't different from your budget. And it's the first, I'm going to say, couple pages of your budget where it covers the expenses for the Superintendent's Office, the Business Office, the Instructional Office, Human Resources. So it is literally the central administration budget. We call it the admin budget. So it will cover our salaries, our benefits, some supplies, some equipment, contractual expenses. So covered in that, in our administrative budget for next year, we have 15.37 FTEs, which sounds a little silly, because they're full people. But in a Boses budget, it depends on how many programs you work in will be where your salary and benefits are budgeted in. So if we go and look at central administration, that second blue box down, 2.6 Central Office Administrators. There's four of us. There's four full people. But three of us also supervise programs. So portions of our salary and benefits are budgeted in programs. So that would be myself, Kerry, and Mark. And then our District Superintendent, by state regulation, all of his salary and benefits must be budgeted in the admin budget. So that 1.0 FTE is budgeted there. So if we go down to the next box, it lists salaries for administrators as well as support staff, equipment, supplies, contractual expenses, benefits, internal co-surcharges, and Boses-wide health insurance. So I'd like to focus for a minute on other contractual expenses. You'll notice that that line item is significantly different than the current year, from $461,000 to $668,000. Included in that category of other contractual expenses is our revenue anticipation note interest. And so the world has changed, the markets have changed, banking has changed, and their interest rates have drastically changed. So we borrow money for cash flow. So we borrowed at the beginning of the year. Cash flow gets better, we pay it off at the end of the year. But that interest is what is budgeted in that line item. And we've all, I'm sure, have taken a look at our 403Bs and 401Ks and know that the interest rates have certainly changed. So that is the explanation for that line item. The benefit analysis, we like to break that out. So you can see that's a large number. So you can see that includes our employee retirement, teacher retirement, social security, et cetera. Again, very identical to a Component School District budget. The next line item, internal co-surcharges, if you go back over to the left there, that line is different than a Component District budget, because no different than Monroe Woodbury purchases, let's say, our risk management or some technology services. We, as a Boses, also utilize those services. So instead of writing ourselves a check to pay for that service, it's an internal charge. It's an accounting function. So we're paying from the admin budget into those program budgets for our share of it. And then the Boses-wide retiree health insurance. So that line item, Patrick and I both serve on the Orange Elster Health Plan Board of Directors, and certainly health insurance is a large portion of every budget. But this piece is very different, because mandated by New York State, we must budget all retiree health insurance in the admin budget. So even though not all of these people that are retired worked in admin, no matter where you worked, it's budgeted here. And it's an accounting function, really, because if you worked, let's say, 30 years in our Special Ed Division, for 30 years, your benefits were paid out of that program budget. But when you retire, they're now paid out of admin, because if that program budget, that program itself were to go away, where would I then pay those benefits? So it's really an accounting function, and programs come and programs go. So the state decided this was the best way to keep it consistent, even though I think it looks a little out of sorts to have such a large number with that small number of people working in our program for admin. It's what makes sense and is mandated by the state. So that gives us a total admin budget of the $9,024,000. The next line, less miscellaneous administrative fees. I like to equate that to if you were to set your tax levy, but you're going to reduce it by perhaps some fund balance from the previous year, so that it reduces the amount that the taxpayers are going to pay. This line item reduces the amount that we're going to bill our districts. And those monies, the $1,050,000, comes from administrative fees that we charge districts who are not our components. I'll give you an example. Newburg. Newburg subscribes to several of our programs. They're a big user of our Special Ed programs. So they are charged the tuition plus 13%. So that 13% is collected through the tuition and then moved into the administrative budget to offset what our Component Districts have to pay, because they don't, as a non-Component District, pay into our admin budget. So this is a function whereby they do, and offsets what we bill our districts. Any questions so far? Okay. On the next page, our capital budget, we give a little summary of an overview of the items that are covered in our capital project that is starting to get underway as we finalize contracts with our construction management firm, and we're in deep discussions with our architects, who are starting to put the details on the planning. And so the capital budget for next year, $6,386,000, is the amount that our districts will each pay their portion of as we ease into the capital project, because, as you're aware, not every dollar is needed upfront. So our architects and Mr. Coleman have come up with a plan, along with our financial advisors, to figure out how much do we need in the first couple months and then beyond that, so that each year, in the first couple years, we're only billing what is needed to cover those upfront expense. The bottom of that page is our rental budget. So as you know, we rent space from school districts and some Village of Goshen, for instance. Where else? Newburg Adult Learning Center, that's a rental that we do from the county. And those are additional spaces that we need to run our programs. And then we pay those leases. And then all of our districts pay their proportionate share to us to cover the expense of those leases, because those costs are not covered through tuition. They're covered in this separate budget for rental. Any questions so far? Okay. So I'm going to flip to the back. So the back page is a listing of our districts with the totals for admin, rental, and capital, and the proportional share for each district. So the methodology that is used for these, for the breakdown, is ARWADA, right? We love our little acronyms in education. Resident, weighted, average, daily attendance. So in essence, a larger school district, like a Middletown, would have a larger average daily attendance than a Tuxedo, right? So they would pay, Middletown pay a larger share than Tuxedo would pay. So it's a methodology prescribed by the state that we utilize for the admin rental and capital distribution of the expenses. Any questions up to that point?
No.
Okay. So the centerpiece, if you will, are some stories from parents and students at Orange Elster Boses that we love to share, some of the good news and the experiences that our folks are having. And we'd like to open up to any questions that you might have at this point.
Got a math question, but I'm going to ask Kim, the finance guy, before I ask you.
Okay.
I'll just, sorry to go back. The rental budget, it's looking like a 1.48% increase from the 2022, 2023 year, 2024. Is that 1.48% more than the previous year?
That's correct.
Looks like it's all.
Yeah, it doesn't tie.
Right?
Because it's $10,530.
Right, okay.
So you're right.
It just looks like a much smaller increase, so I just wasn't sure if there's anything else that's included in it.
Sorry. I apologize. We'll certainly be looking that over when we leave.
So, go ahead.
So these rentals, what exactly are you renting? What is the...
So we can go line by line, if you'd like. Chester Academy, we rent an entire wing of classrooms from them to run some of our special needs programs.
You want to jump in, Kerry?
Kerry runs these programs.
I can go through them. So Chester Academy's middle and high school space that we rent to run special needs programs. Goshen Middle School, we rent space in there for the Orange County Interscholastic Athletics. That's where the coordinator of athletics for all the programs runs out of there. Goshen Main Street School, we rent space there for middle school students that are special needs students as well. Marlboro is an elementary school that we rent, the Middle Hope Elementary School, and that is a K6 building for special needs students that have, they're classified as ED, they have behavioral challenges, and so they're placed there. Minna Sync High School is obviously a high school. We rent three spaces at Minna Sync, the Otisville Elementary, the Middle, and the High School, and that is predominantly programs for students who are on the autism spectrum. Newburg Adult Learning Center is a space that, right now, we run our LPN program in, that Neil Wilkinson oversees, as well as other adult programming. The Regional Education Center, there is no longer a rent, because as of...
December?
December. The LDC turned over ownership of Arden Hill to Orange Elster Boses. So we are finished completing paying off that lease payment, and so now we own it. The Village of Goshen, we actually rent a storefront in the Village of Goshen, where we have our program called Including Communities. It's a program for children with developmental disabilities, and they have their classes in that building, and then they spend part of their day in the community of businesses, learning work skills. It's a transition program for students who are at high school age. Warwick Pine Island Elementary School is the Pine Island Elementary School that we rent that has programs for, right now, K5. Next year, it will also include sixth graders, and those are students who have varied disabilities. And then there's a proposed adult education space, because we need a program to run ELL programming for adults in Orange County. But at this point, that's just a placeholder, because we continue to look for that space. We don't have the space at this time. So, sorry.
So I have a question on the ARWADA calculation. It has for our school, I guess this is an estimate, right? It says it's a budget of $7,429 for next year for Monroe Woodbury.
Yes.
Okay. So it's my understanding, and I don't know if I'm accurate, but ARWADA is one way that this can be calculated, and there are other options based on maybe attendance for a number of students that actually attend the program. So how many students do we have attending the Boses programs?
Which program?
In total.
Okay.
I think we have 172. You have 172. I think you have 101 in CTE.
That's correct.
68 in Special Ed and for adult, or, excuse me, Alternative Ed students.
Okay.
And how does this compare to other schools?
Every school is different. Every size of school is different, and every number that they send is different.
So 172 out of how many students total?
Well, your ARWADA says that you have approximately average daily attendance of 7,397.
No, no, I meant for your Boses.
Oh, how many?
Boses, you said we had 172.
Okay.
We have about 1,000 students in special education, and we have approximately 1,900 in CTE. So take the Special Ed numbers, you know, it's a rolling admission, so.
So I think the biggest question, and I know I say this every time that we meet, but as board members, the biggest thing that we get, especially this time of year when kids are making their schedules, is the numbers don't match up. So we end up having a large waitlist of students that don't get into the CTE program. And I know that's when, as board members, we're kind of, you know, getting fielded questions as to why. It doesn't make sense. Why are they taking excess kids from such and such district, but Monroe Woodbury has a waitlist? I don't always have an answer to that question. I know it came up recently again with the capital project as well. So I'm going to put it out to you, because it's the question that I get, is do we project that we are going to have more seats for the CTE program next year?
So for the CTE program, actually, the methodology of how students will be placed in CTE next year is changing. So in the past, CTE has been a first-come, first-served. So if you are applying for welding, which is one of our most popular programs right now, welding, they would number the applications of the students as they were submitted by the school district. And so those students whose applications were submitted earlier would be placed earlier. And there have been discussions at the Superintendent's level and at the high school principal's level about concerns about that methodology. So starting next year, the students will, it will be a lottery, right? In essence, it will be randomized, and so everyone has an equal opportunity to land in one of those seats. And I just want to qualify that a little bit to say, in most academies in CTE, there is not a waiting list. But there are a couple particular programs, and it depends on the year.
Because it changes over time what the interest is.
Right. So I don't know if anybody remembers Guy Fieri on the Food Network, right? So when he was really popular, you could not get a seat in culinary. Now, welding, welding, animal science, aviation, those are incredibly, incredibly popular, right? So other academies, heavy equipment, HVAC, culinary, that you have, you will have a seat in those spots as I speak now. Now, I say these words out loud, and you watch next year, for whatever reason, HVAC will be incredibly popular. But there's just a couple academies that are really challenging to find spots. And I will tell you, when it comes to welding, because that is just one, that is just on the top of our list all the time, I actually was on the phone today with someone who shall not be named, that has welding connections to see if there's additional space in the county of Orange that we could rent to open more welding seats, right? Because regardless of the capital project, I will not have a new welding lab open for September.
But you know Dawn's listening right now, and she's thinking.
Where do I have to post?
Another bus. That's the problem.
But I'm trying, we're trying to find solutions to solve that exact problem, because we don't want there to be waitlists. And again, they're just specific groups. And right now, your students and all the rest of the students have already come for visitation to CTE. Anybody that's interested in coming next year has already visited, and they've already told us what their first choice is and what their second choice is. So we're already trying to anticipate where are those bubbles, right? Like where are the big desires for the programming, and to accommodate that in the space that we have. But again, welding, I'll keep going back to, that has a very unique space requirement. I cannot pop up a welding lab someplace else, which is why we're trying to have conversation outside of the building itself.
But if aviation continues to grow, we can open up another classroom, buy another simulator, and replicate that fairly easily.
Right.
And I appreciate those responses. So what I did is I just calculated real quick. 2,900 students in total, 1,019 were the numbers that I had heard. So Monroe Woodbury is represented by 5.39% of that total, based on the 172 number. The amount we're contributing to the budget is 14.73, and we're actually the highest in dollar amount to that. So our concern as a board is the value for the number of students we can send, based on what we're helping to pay for in Boses. So the ratios just don't line up for us when we see that we have 5.93% of the student population, but we're paying almost 15% of the overall allocation. So that's where we sit mostly.
Right. And I think that, going back, I mean, I guess we'll see how it works out with the lottery. But I think, again, that's the complaint that, as a parent, I've heard. And you can use welding as the example. But if you tell me the previous system, you had 14 kids in that class from Newburg, or, I know Newburg doesn't come, and one kid from Monroe Woodbury, again, that's where we're then starting to get fielded, you know, how is that happening? So I mean, I guess we'll see how the lottery system works out, that hopefully that will at least differentiate some of the students into the classes.
And our hope is that that will alleviate it as well, right? And we're going to give it a shot. I can't promise it will be perfect, but that's our hope. And I think Deborah and Mark could speak to it much better than I could, because I really work on the student program side. But that's not the only thing that Monroe Woodbury subscribes to, right?
That's correct.
You participate highly in a lot of the other areas that are not student-based.
Right.
Such as what?
It's okay.
Technology, records management, communication. So all of the non-instructional services, management services that we offer.
Professional development, you're great participators in instructional support services.
Risk management.
Yep. You participate in a lot of the other programs that are not student-based, because you're in a unique position also where you're located, right? Because I don't know your numbers, but my guess is you send students to Rockland, right, because of where you're located and your proximity to Rockland, versus where some of our programs are located that might be less convenient. Like, I'm guessing Middle Hope in Marlboro is not the most convenient place for you to send students, right? So I understand that. But you do participate pretty strongly in a lot of the other non-student-based programs.
But we're still in the field of educating, right?
Of course. Of course. All those other programs support education.
So Mike brought up a very good point. 6%, almost 6% of our students participate, and we contribute over 15%. But yet, we are educating. We're supposed to be educating. The money has to be allocated to education.
And that was one of the biggest concerns with the referendum that was put out, because, you know, and I'm not trying to pick on you, but you said, "we hope." The problem with "hope" is it's not a strategy, and we're just trying to understand how we get more of our students in the programs, because we're aware of a number of students who have been waitlisted in electrical, carpentry, you know, the programs and some of the programs you recommended had covered.
Yeah. And I'll be happy to look at the numbers of the students that, of Monroe Woodbury students that don't. And "hope" was probably a bad word to use, and I appreciate the correction. But because I do think that we are looking at the data to try to determine what do our waitlist look like this year, right, versus what happens when we move to this lottery system, right, which really resembles more of a...
Which is the lottery system, which I think is our strategy, to make this fairer across board. And I can tell you that we have districts that are not happy that we are going with this, what we believe is a fairer system, right? So...
So we're kind of getting it at both ends.
You get it.
What's the lottery?
Is it weighted better for...
So it's going, what is going to happen is that instead of students first-come, first-served, right, and kind of a race to the seat, what it's going to do is take a randomizer, like literally a randomizer computer program, and put all the students, and I'll keep using welding, all the students that are interested in welding, in the randomizer, so that they have a random opportunity of taking a seat. And again, it's, the lottery system is only going to impact those programs for which there are more students than seats, right? The other programs, that there are enough seats, it doesn't matter. I don't need to randomize you. I put you in the program.
But then you could have a district that's paying a tenth of what Monroe Woodbury is, and they could be taking the seats. So that's completely not a fair system. Like, it's better than what you previously were doing, but it's still not good. Because when I look, I'm not as smart as Mike.
Lottery system could end up being, you know, random, completely random.
We'll have 117.
When I look at the numbers, and I see that Monroe Woodbury and the taxpayers here are paying the most amount, and, I mean, I don't know what Goshen's numbers are and how many people are going, but we're paying double what they are, right? So I'm looking at it as a per person, per student cost in Monroe Woodbury and what's going to there, right? So if, and every number that I've seen from everybody is, we are paying more than everybody else for your services. Which the good thing is, your services, everybody wants, right? You have spectacular staff. You're wonderful. Hopefully, you have much better facilities now. Like, all of those types of things are wonderful things, right? But for Monroe Woodbury students, we need to ensure that our students are getting what they need, especially when we're the highest-paying ones.
And we want.
And again, I'm new to the board, so I'm learning a lot of this stuff. And again, that's why I put...
And these conversations help us. Just want to thank you.
That's, and I love every kid, but I care about Monroe Woodbury kids the most, right? Because that's our kids. So, you know, and we've got students that are in this room, one that I met tonight, that's, I think, in your program, right? We want more of those kids in there, you know? And if we're the highest-paid, they should be in there. So whatever your system is that you figure out, that's what I'm going to be looking for. And anything short of that is not acceptable.
And we understand that, you know, it's very hard to be fair, you know, across the board. So would you say that as you're using this methodology, you're also going to be backtesting the data outputs to make sure that it's not heavily weighted?
Of course.
Because a randomizer can randomly...
Randomly cause a challenge, correct. So, and we will be looking at that. And I also want to make sure that everybody's aware that whatever methodology we use, the state is involved in determining whether or not that methodology is equitable across all the districts based on resource, right? So they want to make sure that a school district that might not have the same level of resource, for example, with school counselors, to assist students in enrolling in CTE, does not have a different advantage or lack of advantage than a school district that might have greater resource. So I'm absolutely hearing, and I appreciate your feedback, and we will continue to look at all of the data as it comes out. But we're kind of responding to a lot of challenges to make sure that as many students... Because listen, our goal is, honestly, I want all the students that want to go to CTE to be in CTE. They want to be there for a reason. They get exceptional programming. They have wonderful opportunities once they finish. Many of them enter in careers and making an exceptional living, and we, because it's a great opportunity for them. So we want them all to be in there. So our goal is to, A, try to find a way to get as many in as we can now, and then afford more opportunity by expanding the program so that there are more seats. So then I won't need a randomizer. I need more seats. And then that way, I can accept every student that wants to go.
And we understand there's a balance, right? You can't have oversubscription with people teaching if you don't have enough students there, because then that's not a good cost-effective model. So...
And we would have layoffs, so we've done that in the past.
Correct. So, but our goal is, and that was really the impetus of some of the concerns that we have, because we weren't hearing, even in the capital plan, okay, how is that going to impact the number of students we can send? to impact the number of students we can send? And it was never clear to us, so that's why we're bringing it up again.
It's great questions, great feedback, we appreciate it.
And we will share with you that-
Oh, Stacy has one.
It's just an ad-vocation that Mr. Reynolds actually just brought up, and I know that we were just visiting with you at spring, April, May of last year, but we used to get invited, when our students came to visit your program, the board members used to get invited to come and see as well. I don't know if that was intentional, as to the timing of the year, but for somebody like Mr. Reynolds, who just mentioned that he's never been, I think that's a great opportunity that, it's a day that you're already kind of hosting us, so I know, you know, when we were there, you kind of laid out the red carpet for us, you showed us a lot, it's a lot for you guys. So perhaps that's why, I mean, I know, as a board member, I've been there twice, on days that our kids visited your programs.
Okay.
So I'm assuming I was invited, so please, I was. I was there-
I'm not aware you were, but I'm glad you came.
I was there with the principal and other board members, and Elsie, Elsie was there with me.
We will love to roll out the red carpet again.
Right, so I think-
But it's not a problem for us to-
Because, you know, the board is constantly changing, and new members that come on might not have even been able to see your campus.
Yes, so personally, I'd love to come, like, as soon as possible.
Okay.
So I'm sure you have spring break next week, like the rest of us.
We'll have you right back, we'll have you right after.
So I don't wanna infringe on anybody's time.
No, but we would love to have you when students are here.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
That's the best.
Next week.
So sometime in April, it'd be perfect.
You got it.
Sign me up, I'll be there, and I do not need a red carpet, so cement's perfect.
And as Stacy said, it was really great to walk through all of the programs, so we saw the value. So, you know, our concerns weren't related to the programs and what's offered there, it's how do we make sure Monroe Woodbury children are on, in the programs, and not all, you know, not that they're all, but on waitlists, where there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff.
Understood. And I, I can assure you that both Elsie and Patrick specifically have represented your concerns well.
So can I ask another question again? I'm also relatively new to, to all this, and, so the, the formula for financing BOSI's comes from the state, right? So it's based on, I guess, district allocation, based on number of students and the ratio of students. So it's not based on, I'm sending a student and I get billed for it, right?
Like, if you send a hundred people, you get billed for a hundred people.
So if, so the admin rental and capital is based on your arwata, your portion of those? But if you're gonna send a student to special education, you then get a tuition bill for that student, for that program?
I was, I was actually asking about our water, that, that was the question. So it's not, it's not based on, we sent 172 students?
No, it's based on your total enrollment population.
I see.
Are there any other questions? I wanna thank you very much.
We wanna thank you for taking the time in your meeting tonight to have us, and we will be reaching out to set up a tour. And anytime you have a question, of course, Elsie and Patrick meet with us monthly, actually, all of you, Lori, Eric, Matt, you're always there, always attending, and, and we're happy to have your crew, as they bring so much to the table. And there are so many new folks that need everybody's guidance, and your team is always up for that, so we thank you for that.
Thank you, we really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the budget presentation.
Eric and Matt's turn.
Eric and Matt.
Now we're gonna go in.
No, no, it's, yeah, but it's not, we didn't get the votes for it. So they, no, they're going heavily. Because it was a public, we have a talk. Because one of us voted not to do it cheaply, well, stop doing it.
Well, I, as I was looking, oh, the other thing, Patrick, with the BOSI's presentation, it wasn't online for the public. Do you have the most recent copy of that?
I, I believe I do.
Can we get that posted tomorrow?
Yeah, sure.
If Taryn, if you could send it to Taryn to post, so that way the public can take a look at what we were discussing.
Will do.
Oh, this flyer?
The flyer.
I gave it to Taryn. He has it as well.
No, 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 we have it, I see on the agenda, the public can't pull it up.
Okay, we'll, we'll post it, yeah.
That way the public can kind of look at it.
Ready? They're up. They're in the hot seat, so make sure we have lots of questions.
It is hot.
Oh, Dr. Hassel looked right at me here.
You have a question before we get started?
Yes, you wanna just-
No, that'll derail the whole thing.
So, so thank you for having us, you know, tonight, to talk about the proposed budget for the curriculum and instruction end of, of the district. We start off all of our presentations by letting people know that there, this doesn't happen just with just the two of us, there are a large number of people who play a role in this, and that ranges from Patrick and, and the entire business and accounting office, to our folks in the CNI office, to our building principals and directors, anyone else?
Yeah, the, the department chairs, they're responsible for their individual budgets. I, I think everybody, and, and it's, it's a lot of back and forth, it's not just entering things in Wincap, it's a lot of questions, it's a lot of adjustments, and the business office in particular, I think, is super patient with changes and changes and changes, and-
And more changes.
And more changes.
So to, to this, at this point in the budget process, we've heard from a number of different people. We've heard Patrick, who walked us through the budgetary process as a whole, triangles and all. We've then heard from, from Lori after that, who talked about people and the staff. This is pretty much about programs and the stuff, so everything else that we have within the district. And when we were putting this together, we were focusing on one guiding question, which is, what do we value? And our hope is that through tonight, you'll be able to see that. We're gonna be focusing on four areas. The highlights of the budget, our extracurricular programs, we'll get into that a little bit, the CNI overall budget overview, and then we're gonna break out our special education and PPS, because there's a lot of information just within that, that field, so we'll talk about that as well.
So we're gonna start with the budget highlights. I, I think that one of the fundamental priorities for us in, in starting to develop this budget was, first and foremost, the expenses to maintain all of our programs. I, I think that was a theme that came out in the HR presentation at the last Board of Ed meeting about maintaining staff for our programs. Similarly, it's incumbent upon us, as Matt said, to make sure that we are providing the proper resources and tools in order to be able to maintain all of the district programs. So I think that that was budget priority number one. Budget priority number two for us was a focus on professional development. All of the various presentations that we've done over the course of the year, I know professional development has been a theme for us, in terms of what we've been trying to accomplish over the course of the school year, and that's something that we are projecting to continue into the 23, 24 school year, and the budget reflects that. One of the major focuses for us is gonna be the continuation of something called the Tri-State Consortium. I think we've mentioned it a few times at Board of Ed meetings, and there's been some highlights sent to the board about various initiatives that we've done in the school district. The Tri-State Consortium is an alliance of public school districts that is committed to systems thinking, and they help school districts work on continuous improvement. We've attended a number of different trainings over the course of the year, we're progressing towards having the consortium do a visitation within the school district, and we're anticipating having additional professional development by them next year. So that's something that, that, when we get into the greater detail about the budget, you'll be hearing more about that.
So this isn't our first time presenting in front of you during the course of the year, and one of the things that we, when we presented earlier in the school year, we talked about the, the CNI needs, and one of the areas of needs, I'm sorry, one of the areas of need that was shared by teachers was surrounded by, or focused on foundational skills, particularly foundational reading skills for our earliest learners. This presentation includes budgeted figures to focus on that, using a multisensory approach to phonics, which would really engage our, our youngest students, particularly in the K2, K2 realm. In addition to that, we've heard, seen, and understood the, the need to best determine how our students are performing. So the numbers that are reflected in this budget also take into account how we best progress monitor our students, so that we have a better understanding of knowing where they are and how they're performing as, as learners. The numbers that are indicated in this budget also take that into account. What it also does is we, it focuses in on science at the elementary and middle school levels, and the, the reason we've taken that and highlighted that is, New York State is instituting a new science test at the fifth grade and the eighth grade level next year. It used to be at fourth grade and, and eighth grade, and it's new. And one of the new components is a series of investigations that every student has to have completed. There are four of them by, by the end of fifth grade. Every student has to complete these investigations. There are another series of investigations have to be completed by eighth grade. It's set up like a lab, you know, like you'd find in a high school classroom, where students can work, they work together, they can pair up together. In fact, even some of them can be done for homework, which I don't necessarily anticipate us agreeing to, nor do I think our teachers are gonna agree to say, "Oh yeah, just take that home and good luck, kid." But we have to factor in some extra expenses for that, because New York State is saying, "Oh, now you have to purchase all the materials that go along with these investigations," so that's in here as well.
The, the old science assessment had two components, there was a, it was a two-day exam, one day was attributed to a, like a performance component, where they would do some hands-on activities, and the second day was a written component. The, the science investigations that they're moving towards are now sprinkled across multiple years, where similar to what the students have to do that take Regent's courses, where they have required labs over the course of the school year, there are basically required labs that the students have to complete prior to the administration of the written science exam.
So in years past, the fourth grade teachers would get slammed with science tests, right? They'd have all the prep, they'd have everything on, on their shoulders, and now it will be spread out amongst our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, so that each of them will get a sprinkling in terms of, of the investigations.
So, moving on to the next item, which is an increase in career and technical education opportunities. So a big theme in the BOSI's presentation was the number of seats of our kids that are attending the BOSI's program. And part of the discussion of the BOSI's capital project was, hopefully, the increased capacity for them to have additional seats for kids with regards to their facilities. We wanna make sure that we are prepared for those opportunities for our kids, and included in that is the fiscal commitment of the school district. So what we've included in next year's budget are five additional seats for students to be able to participate in the BOSI CTEC program. Our plan is to continue to incrementally weave that in, so that way, when their capital project is completed, and they have the ability to come back to us and say, "We have room for additional Monroe Woodbury students," that financially, we have the capacity to be able to offer our kids that opportunity in order to be able to do that. Another item that's included in the budget is our high school piano on the stage at the high school is in need of significant repair, we've done a budget analysis of that, and it's actually more responsible for us to actually go out and purchase a new piano, so we've included that in the budget for next year. And then finally, at the end, we will go through a, a review of the special education tuition as well.
And there are things in here that you may not necessarily see, and for example, the high school piano is, is a highlight up there, but the person who services our, our instruments, our pianos, is retiring, and he's been doing that for a lot of years. So when we bring somebody else in, we're not gonna get the, "Hey, I've been a longstanding Monroe Woodbury, you know, repair person," we're now gonna have to use somebody else, and those rates would obviously be increased as well.
So one of the questions that was asked was to provide an overview of our various extracurricular programs. And in doing that, Matt and I sat down to kind of talk about the best way to be able to compare those various programs across the school district. The way that we are presenting it now are the number of extracurricular opportunities that our students have, meaning if a club has multiple advisors, for example, the Yearbook Club has multiple advisors, the Yearbook Club is still counted as one. The newspaper has one advisor, that's also counted as one. Students have the ability to be able to join the Yearbook Club or the Newspaper Club. So all clubs were basically considered as one opportunity for students. Same as interscholastic athletic teams. If a team has two coaches, that still counts as one team, if a team has one coach, that still counts as one team. If the middle school has two modified teams, that counts as two teams. If a middle school has one modified team, that counts as one team. So we broke it down according to what the offerings are for the 22, 23 school year, and what the offerings are gonna be for the 23, 24 school year, in terms of what we have budgeted for. The high school has 50 clubs presently, the middle school has 19. Next year, the high school is going to have 54 clubs, and the middle school is going to have 20 clubs. The high school is adding four clubs. Now, again, when I say added, these are clubs that are currently in existence, but now have, because they've been approved, we have advisors for the clubs, they are being woven into the budget. So they're all clubs that, you know, if you go onto the high school website and look at all the clubs, they're clubs that already existed, we're just now making sure that they're included in the budget, because they've already been approved, the staff have been approved, and we're able to move forward with them, at the elementary level.
And at the element, we had the same, use the same methodology, we'll, we'll be adding, we added a chess club this year, but again, it ran through its one-year, one-year allotment of time, and now we're gonna be budgeting it for it next year, so.
The, and regarding interscholastic athletics, the high school has total, a total of 46 teams this year. In the budget next year, there's going to be a total of 49 teams. This year, we've, and, and these, again, these are programs that are currently running, now they're being woven into the budget, because they started through Section 9, kind of late in the game, and they weren't able to be included in the 22, 23 budget. That's the esports program, flag football, and freshman basketball. And again, we've had, we, we had freshman basketball in the winter, we have flag football, and we have esports functioning now and competing in Section 9, but they, they got a late start post-budget development for the current school year, so now we're weaving them into the budget next year. There were not modifications of any of the middle school level teams. There were 22 teams this year at the middle level, and there's gonna be 22 teams again next year.
And I, I don't, especially to this group and to the public, I don't think we necessarily need to get into all the wonderful benefits of our students participating in, in all of these clubs. So from our vantage point, the, the more opportunities that we have for our students before and after school, or outside of school, that, you know, it's better for everyone.
What is, what is esport?
Esport is electronic sports, gaming.
Video games.
Yep.
It's a varsity sport now.
It's, it is a, yep, kids can compete interscholastically and receive a varsity letter in it.
We were born at the wrong time.
Man, I would've been so grown up.
There's hope for my son.
There you go.
Is there Division, is there Division I, Division II, NCAA?
I think that there, I don't know that all, all universities offer it, but I, it's growing.
It's interesting.
And, and again, previously, this kind of grew out of, for a number of years, we've had a gaming club, where kids just kind of competed within the high school. This is the first year that Section 9 is offering it as an interscholastic sport, and, and you may remember, years ago, we added a bowling team, same sort of concept, where basically you can't develop a team, we had, to use freshman basketball as an example, we've had, we had freshman basketball for a number of years, slowly, school districts were cutting their freshman basketball teams, and we didn't have teams for us to be able to play. Now that other school districts are offering teams and the abilities that existed for them to compete, we were able to add the team and have them have interscholastic competitions again. So for us, part of the driving force behind this is the section and other school districts' ability to be able to offer those opportunities.
And what we can do, you know, because I, obviously, there's maybe some interest, is let you know when those, those competitions take place, so you can come check it out, because I haven't even seen it yet.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just saw, I, I mean, I just saw on Twitter, you know, Mr. Dimmitt just took all of the photos of all the spring teams, and I saw, like, for the first time, the Monroe Woodbury High School flag football team is out there, and it's, all those kids on that team are getting a varsity letter. It's, it's a varsity team.
For the elementary, like the chess, so is that for each elementary building? Like, how do we do that?
Yeah, yes, so every, every, there are a variety of clubs. There's reading club and, and environmental club and every building is more or less the same. Sometimes they call it something different. So CV might be the Go Green Club and, and North Main might be the Garden Club or, or something to that effect. But every, every building has the opportunity to have it.
So when we're adding the chess club, are we adding that to each building then?
So, across the board.
But we're only counting it as one?
Right.
Correct.
So really though, we're adding, because, right, we're adding three, really. So it's even more.
Well, that's my question, is the staffing?
Yep.
So, it's like you've said before, and to Jeff's point, like, you know, I'm getting, the, the garden club might only need one person.
Correct.
But another club might need, you know, Yearbook probably has a staff of two or three.
Right.
So how much staff are you anticipating basing, based on the addition of nine?
Right.
That you have here?
So, so basically, the high school athletics you're talking about, a coach for each of the teams, I think all of the clubs that we've added only have one advisor. Now, it's not a true comparison, if you look very carefully when you, you know, back in the earlier board meetings when you approve club advisors, they're not true FTEs where it's just one single paid position for everyone. It varies based upon how frequently the club meets. Like, if you go on the high school website and you look at the high school list, each of the clubs say, "Meet once a month on Tuesdays, meet every Tuesday, meet every other Tuesday." It, it varies based upon the number of kids. There's a formula, that formula determines the level of staffing, whether it's .3, .4, .5, 2.4s, 2.8s, 2.1.0s. It, it varies depending upon the size, the frequency, the role of the club, whether, you know, whether there's competitions involved. For example, included in, in the numbers at the secondary level are the math team, the science Olympiad team, Odyssey of the Mind, all of those, you know, the, because they, they travel, they go to different competitions, that increases the role of the advisor versus some of the clubs where they basically just meet after school every other week or something. So, the role of the club, whether there's, you know, some of the clubs have fundraising and, and extra classroom funding that's attributed to it. All of those sort of factor in the calculation of the role of the advisor. And again, the reason why, when we sat and we talked about it, it's hard to be able to compare, like, the FTEs of the advisors because it, it, you're not comparing the same thing. We looked at it like, how do we portray the number of opportunities that exist for the kids across the school district?
And we did, we did start with that. We started with FTEs, but it was, you know, 130.8, which didn't make a ton of sense because it was actually more physical bodies than that, than the actual number of FTEs.
Right.
And with the same assessment that you have that we're adding, I'm guessing that you have club assessment every year or somebody in the building is having club assessment that if you have the garden club and they only have one student?
Yep.
You know, fiscally, that might not make the most sense to keep that club.
That is correct. We, we, the, the middle school, the high school, at the elementary level, they track the frequency, how many kids, in fact, at the high school level, it's in power school, where the kids, you know, just like sports are in power school, it's in power school that you are a member of XYZ Club. They, they submit their attendance on a regular basis, so all of it, all of it is tracked.
Okay.
Yep. And the same rules apply also for academic eligibility where, you know, you have to be in good academic standing in order to be able to participate in it. And that's the reason partly why they track that. When they run academic eligibility, that's just, that's not just an interscholastic athletic item, that's true for all clubs. You know, you, you can't participate in the school play if you're not in good academic status. That, that applies to all.
Okay. The last question that I got from community recently, or I would probably say like the last month, and I've seen it more and more, I just saw it recently with drama, I saw one the other day, I wanna say it was for football. Can you just address for the public so that they understand the differentiation between what we're talking about here that's being budgeted for these clubs and extracurricular activities as opposed to the boosters that are then fundraising? A lot of that is taking place on social media and I'm getting questions as to why the district, the district is already paying for that.
Right.
Why are you fundraising for the art program or for the, the play at the high school?
Right.
And I think the public needs to understand that it's two completely separate entities.
Sure. And, and the booster clubs operate completely separate from the school district. And the booster clubs offer a variety of different sort of additional opportunities for kids. For example, the school district may budget for uniforms for the students, but a team may decide, you know, we're, the, the booster club may donate specific jerseys or something for the kids beyond the scope of what the school district may offer. Sometimes the booster clubs will, you know, provide the, you know, a, a budget for the end of the season meal or something like that, the school district, you know, the, the banquet where they give out awards and things like that. The school district does not cover those types of things. Sometimes the booster clubs offer scholarships for kids, you know, the school, the school district does not, you know, contribute to those types of things. So the school, the, the, the school district offers the basic resources in order to be able to run that club.
Okay.
For example, one of the budget lines in here is student activities. The school district covers the cost of the publishing of the school newspaper, you know, the, the basic resources needed in order to be able to run that. Anything additional beyond that is something that the boost, you know, the boosters are responsible for. Yeah.
So with the programs that the teachers oversee?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll just talk, 'cause the musical for the high school was last week.
Yep.
Do they participate in helping to budget the numbers of things, for things that they might need for the next coming school year from a support standpoint?
The teachers, and the students, you mean?
Well, the teachers who run those programs.
Yep.
So, you know, whether it's music or drama or, you know, they obviously have different needs for different resources.
Yep.
So, you know, like where I come from, department heads and others who run those areas put the budget numbers in, they may get them cut, but they, a supply, here's what I'd like to accomplish, is that the same process?
And, and, yeah, and, and again, it varies depending upon the club. When you talk about something like the musical or the fall drama production, they, they have a, a, a larger budget because you're talking about the rental of costumes, you're talking about the, um, you know, the, the, the costs associated with, with buying the, the rights to be able to, to run the play and things like that, offset by ticket sales and, and so they develop a true budget. And, and oftentimes, they'll have, you know, an extra classroom fund, the drama club has an extra classroom fund, where part of the role of the extra classroom fund is there are, aside from just the advisor, there has to be student representatives who assist the advisor in overseeing the management of that. That's the true role of an extra classroom account. And, you know, that's, that's true for any club that has that particular role. That's not true for every club, some clubs don't, you know, don't have that aspect.
So I just, I wanna be careful, when we have a football game?
Yep.
Do we sell tickets to the football game?
No.
No?
No. I, I know that, I'm just asking.
Oh, oh.
So, but the football team or the other sports teams, soccer, all the things that we do have budgetary amounts that are allocated in the budget for them.
Right.
So, really, what it sounds like partially, if I'm understanding it correctly too, is the ticket sales for the shows and the musicals and the whatever else in the different schools helps to offset the cost, so are they really still getting the impact of the budget at the same level? Or, not, not that football and, uh, uh, you know, play are the same thing, but it, it doesn't seem, the formula seems a little bit skewed, I will say.
Right, right. I mean, that's certainly a, a conversation, you mean in terms of the amount of money that's being allocated for different programs across the school district?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think we had almost 110 people involved in the high school show.
Show, yeah.
And that's a lot of student activity.
Yeah, a lot.
Whether it's lights or the back or the front. That's skill sets that they're working on and developing.
Yeah.
Which is great. So, you know, from an investment in those skills and development.
Sure.
That's what I'm looking at as far as the budget.
Yeah.
So yes, the ticket sales help to offset and defer costs, but we don't do that with other programs to say, "Well, here's an offset and a balance."
Well, I, I think though, what's separate is many of the sports programs that you're talking about also have a booster club that's operating separately where, you know, I think that the, the rationale behind some of the ticket sales and things like that is it, it expands the scope of the quality of the performance that's also being able to be offered. You know, I, I saw Beauty and the Beast and, and when you talk about the digital effects that, you know, they had with, with that performance, it's spectacular, you know, and, and I think that's, that's also part of the conversation. You know, the, the ticket sales are used to be able to, you know, provide an even more enriching experience and opportunity for the kids. But I think that we can certainly talk about that, you know? If there's a, a desire of the board to, to commit to some of these additional extracurricular activities, I think that that's a conversation that we can certainly have.
Okay.
And I think that- I think we talked about it a few years ago, I'm sorry. I think one of the biggest things that got brought up a couple of years back, and I feel like it was from Lorraine when she was on the board, was the changing of the costumes. So, I mean, you know, unlike a football team where, you know, my son was on varsity football, he probably had the same uniform the whole time he was there, I, I think. Whereas the plays, it's ever-changing every single year, so I think that was a huge budget item that got brought up, if I remember, 'cause I was in that meeting and I remember Lorraine advocating for it.
Yep.
And not to say that I'm against looking at it again, but I think sometimes it's hard because the plays change every year, so that's definitely one of the factors that I think went into it.
Right.
But, but I think if, if it can be looked at and we can have more discussions on it, maybe the ticket sales instead of going to offset can be used so not as much fundraising is necessary because there, there are some people out in the community that feel like, "Well, we're paying for this in our school taxes, why do we have to..." And they do it anyway, which I appreciate, but I think it's just looking at it to make sure that it's well-balanced.
Got it. Look, you were gonna say something?
No, I was just gonna say, it comes back to your very first question. Are the advisors of the clubs or the coaches of the teams, are they involved in the budgeting process? And the answer, the answer is yes. I can speak to it from an athletics perspective, not so much from the play perspective, but I imagine that is, it is similar and I do think that we, we need to look into that because I can tell you, sitting as an athletic director formerly, I would work with each coach in terms of what their program needs. And I think that we need to make sure that we are having those conversations and allowing the people who are the advisors or the coaches a, a voice to advocate for their programs and for their students. I do believe that is happening, but like you said, we need to make sure it's happening everywhere.
And, and I do think that that, it is also the case for the clubs as well. You know, I think that the advisors are integrally involved in, they're aware of what the budget is for that program and they set the things like what the cost is going to be of the play to be able to offset what the, the projected costs are going to be of that particular production. You know, it's, it's trying to kind of arrive at that spot where they can, you know, offer something that's still fiscally responsible and not having people feeling like they're spending an exorbitant amount of money to go see the school play, but also making sure that they're covering the costs to, to be able to offer the quality of production that they want to offer.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You got it?
All right, so this slide basically indicates, there are eight sections or eight codes that fall under the CNI budget. The first one is core programs. That's basically textbooks and supplies for everything for the four core programs in our K-1 buildings. So, language arts, math, science, and social studies. The next code is district-wide programs, and you can see them up there. The, those are the programs that we run across the entire district. So, health is not just a high school program, it's not just a middle school program, it, it's both. So, those are the areas that fall under district-wide programs. And again, that's textbooks and the, the supplies associated with that.
The next two areas are physical education and athletics, which is inclusive of interscholastic athletics. Those are the costs of maintaining all of our PE facilities within the school district as well as all of the equipment for physical education and athletics, all the various fees associated with interscholastic athletics, the league fees, referees, you know, various travel that they have to do, training for the courses, all of the, all of the, the coaches, they're required to have annual training. And then the next line is the special secondary programs, which is, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Which includes the business education department, which is the high school program, student activities that I was mentioning, mentioning earlier, and the BOSI's occupational education line, which is the line for the tuition for our CTEC students.
And then the last four areas, the next one is instructional support at the building level, and this basically covers the principal supply line. It's also inclusive of conferences and meetings at the, at the school level. So if there is a particular professional development opportunity that a, a principal feels that a, a teacher or a staff member would benefit from, that's where that would come from. And you'll see in a few slides, in two slides later, you'll see an increase in that area because of our commitment to increasing the, the PD line. Education support services, it covers our, our English language learners, our, our AIS program and our non-public textbooks. So, kids who are, or students who are district residents attending non-public schools, that's factored in there. The, I just want to point out though, that the academic intervention piece that you see in the budget is only a, a fraction of the amount of money that we spend on our academic intervention as a whole. Primarily, we're utilizing federal grants, particularly our Title I and Title III monies to, to help support, you know, students in, in those areas.
And the last two lines are instructional management. Instructional management itself is the actual budget for the curriculum and instruction office for dues and publications, for conferences for us. And curriculum development is the BOSI's district-wide professional development line as well as various BOSI's fees that we have to pay and, and things of that nature. And then the final, the, the eighth category is the special education and people services, people personnel services line.
So we couldn't not have a graphic. Everyone else had a graphic, Lori had a graphic, Patrick had multiple graphics, so we, you know, we're gonna pie chart this as well. What, what this is, this is a reflection of the first seven budget codes in the CNI budget. Special education is taken out of here because it's, it's a larger number, and we'll explain that in more detail in, in the next slide or two. But basically, this is a breakdown of those first seven areas. The core programs, the district-wide programs, phys ed and athletics, the special secondary programs, which is largely driven by what Eric said as far as the, the CTEC, you know, program, instructional support, education support, and instructional management all fall under here.
Very nice, Greg.
Thanks.
So, this is the actual breakdown of our current budget and our proposed budget for next year as well as the, the difference between the two. As we share, core programs is the cost for educating in the, the various core content areas. That represents a 1.33% increase from year to year. District-wide programs is showing an increase of $81,000. The vast majority of that increase is the high school piano that we were talking about. Basically, the district-wide programs includes music and that's something that's included in that, in that $81,000 increase.
Can I just ask a question for that?
Yep.
Going back to what Michael said before, so when you have a situation such as that where it's a big budget item? Does that impact a loss at all for, for something else within that category?
Nope.
Okay.
That, that's the reason why ultimately it shows like the increase.
Okay.
Where, the only time that you would see what you're talking about is predominantly in like textbooks.
Okay.
And the reason why I say that is because we usually budget roughly $500,000 annually in textbook money. Because we get one-to-one dollar reimbursement roughly for about $500,000 a year. However, because textbooks exist in core programs, district-wide programs, and special secondary programs, or no, I'm sorry, in, um, district-wide programs and then the, the, oh, yes, I think it's in special secondary programs, that's the non-public schools I think is in there. You might see fluctuation between if world languages is getting a textbook one year and social studies is getting a textbook another year, you'll see a reduction in district-wide programs and an increase in core programs. But when you have like a one-time purchase like that in one specific department, it's just gonna show up as, as an increase.
Ultimately, I think the largest loss was probably the, the loss of sweat from Chris Taborsky when he requested, you know, the increase for piano.
Yes.
I would say he was, he was nervous and the fact that it's in there right now is, is, is a completely-
Well, I do have a question on that though. A piano is a fixed asset, a life. So, is that taking into account the actual purchase of the piano adding to that or, because it really needs to be set up as a fixed asset over time, correct? So it's not the true expense?
Yeah, but we, we don't really deal with it like a private company would. They, they're largely depreciating fixed assets for tax reasons. So they're showing that as an expense year after year and that's lowering their, you know, their, their tax liability. We don't really have to deal with that issue, so we would take that as a one-time expense. We do track our fixed assets. And we do go through an exercise of depreciation, but it's really not used for the purpose that private enterprises and companies would do that because we're a tax-exempt entity.
So, but, according to GAAP accounting, you could do that though.
We could, but the reason you'd be doing that is, is, as I mentioned, for tax purposes. So we're tax exempt, so the, the primary reason for that, I mean, we, we do go through, as I said, as part of our financial statements, an exercise where we, we are depreciating fixed assets and we will record that as a fixed asset, but in terms of the, the budgeting, we, we don't budget depreciation as an expense and-
So, and that's fine, thank you. My concern is, by not using that GAAP accounting treatment, this amount goes up, we forget next year, and the amount goes up again because it's in there. So, and I'm not saying that's happening, I'm just saying that's what could happen because the purpose of putting something over its useful life is to spread out, I understand what you're saying, I'm in a tax-exempt organization and we have fixed assets for everything. So, we don't get a tax benefit, but you do it to level-set the expense over a period of time for its useful life. So, if the piano has a 10-year useful life, GAAP accounting might say you can spread it over seven years, you would spread that expense over seven years. I'm just assuming because of the increase, it's a pretty expensive piano. So, that's just my idea.
Well, I can speak to that. Actually, we've had, over the years that I've sat and done this presentation, a variety of instances like this. One thing that comes to mind is we had a few years ago a replacement plan for mats at the elementary level, where for, I don't know, three to four years, the PE line was increased because we needed to replace the mats across the school district. Even though the cost of various things were continuing to increase and we had to, you know, replace certain equipment, the PE line was going up and then all of a sudden, one year, you saw it come to an end because we removed the mats from that. So, you will see a decrease in the music line next year because of, and you can hold me to that.
So, look at the math this year.
Right, and that's exactly right. Where even though, even though there doesn't appear to be much of a fluctuation of the overall budgets in the core program and district-wide program, if you look at the actual textbook lines, because we purchased the math, the new math program this year, the math textbook lines have dropped significantly because we had earmarked money in the math lines for the purchase of that this year, and the money now is reducing that, again, we don't take textbook money out of the budget because it's full-dollar-for-dollar aided, that money is now being shifted in another location. But you will look and see that ebb and flow in the detailed budget reports, if, you know, if you look at the Wincap reports.
And things like this, they're not financed, they're paid out in cash?
Yes, that's true, they're paid.
I just love that everybody just went like this.
Yeah.
Basically, the only things we finance are capital projects and investments, buses maybe, but we don't even do that.
But what I was asking before, just so you know, Sergey, is if it was $100,000 and it's got a seven-year useful life, you take the $100,000 out of the bank, you buy it, but then you expense it over a seven.
Well, I mean, the pianos, they have a lifetime, and especially with the amount of use that you have here, isn't it easier to lease one? It's a lesser expense.
I don't.
And after a while, you just turn it in and get a new one.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how the lease of an instrument like that would work, but I think generally we're keeping it for 15 or 20 years, that just outright purchase
I would say probably even more than that.
How old is our current piano at the high school?
It's really old. It's older than 15 years. I.
I mean, you should be able to upgrade instruments a lot faster. I mean, a 20-year-old piano is probably not a very good piano.
Right, that's why we're getting a new one.
And so, the question, no, but the question here is, will it be more practical?
To lease it.
To lease it, and every couple of years, three, four, five years, you have a new instrument.
The only thing I would say to that is even in a lease situation, you pay interest. It doesn't seem like it, but there is interest bundled and buried into that situation. When we buy things, we don't pay the interest.
But then, in the end, 15 years from now, you'll pay $200,000 for a piano, because these things, they go up in price. So, I think that it's something maybe worth looking at.
I don't know if pianos have a.
No problem.
We can do that.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Have a really shelf life after they've been purchased.
I'm curious.
From what I've heard, you know, after, used pianos are not worth much of anything.
But that's what I'm saying.
But that's, trading it in, you might not even realize any value.
If you don't own it, if you just lease it, you don't own it.
Then, you know, that's like leasing a car, you know, you're going to pay most of the value upfront and then.
The only conversation, I did not have a conversation with Chris Taborzki about the possibility of leasing it.
He's probably sweating a lot more right now.
Yes. I did have a conversation, though, part of the conversation about the difference between refurbishing our current piano and purchasing a new one is the amount of use that the piano gets at the high school. It gets used every period, every day.
Okay.
Continuously. And I think that from his perspective, he was like, to invest the money in refurbishing the new one, which is almost the same amount of money as purchasing a new one, you will get the longevity out of a brand-new piece of equipment based upon the amount of use that it takes in a high school.
But even furthermore, if you are using it that much, it may be worth leasing it.
I hear you.
Because the cost of fixing it over the years, the maintenance, the replacements of parts, may not be worth it. I don't know what the cost, I know that the cost of purchase is $81,882.
No, it's not, that's not, that's not all the piano.
Yeah, I think like 65, 70,000.
70,000, I think it's 65,000.
What is the yearly expense associated with using that piano?
So, can I, can I just interrupt? His, Dr. Hassler doesn't play the piano. He's not that good.
No.
But we do have somebody in the back, and she's like, Nikki Cook.
Put him on the spot.
Used to be, I do, I like doing that, used to be our music coordinator, and she probably could give you the answer that you're looking for. Right, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
You have to be loud so that everyone can hear you.
I mean, it's been a while, but in general, we've always advocated for purchasing an instrument like a piano, because they tend not to depreciate. If anything, they appreciate, and I'm guessing, I don't know, but that piano is probably 40 or 50 years old.
Yeah, there you go.
And if it wasn't used as much, and at times abused, because it is a high school and it has, I believe it was moved from the middle school.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm fairly certain that it was moved from, when, in '99, when the high school became the new high school, I believe that it came from that building.
Yeah, it probably would have had a little bit more of a life, a shelf life. I mean, if I was Chris Taborzki, I'd also be investing in a nice cover and some things that'll protect it a little bit better, because I think that's really what got us into this position.
Just went up.
$81,000.
$81,000 now.
You better sit down. Sit down now, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cook.
Thank you.
So, I just want to clarify that it could be a piano, it could be a giant tube, it could be whatever it is. I just think sometimes if we can utilize GAAP accounting to spread some of the costs, I know that you do.
Yeah.
Then sometimes we might be able to upgrade or replace things sooner because the costs, I understand from a perspective of a tax advantage, but if you don't have the tax advantage, you still get the benefit of taking 1/5th or 1/7th of it, so maybe replacing things more quickly because it's a smaller budgetary impact.
Right.
Because I also know, and I'm not, I don't know Patrick and his team, a lot of accountants don't love fixed assets, because you got to track them, it's on spreadsheets, there's a lot to monitor, so letting that blow up can also be a problem. So, I think it's just finding the balance. That's really more from an accounting and expense leveling standpoint.
Got it. All right. So, the physical education increases the cost of equipment and materials, as I said earlier, for our PE program, as well as our interscholastic athletic program. The special secondary program, as I mentioned, that entire increase in that line is attributed to two factors. One is the cost of tuition increase in the CTEC program for the current number of seats that we have budgeted, plus for the additional five seats that we're budgeting for the next school year. But just a reminder, because that is a BOSI's program, we do get BOSI's aid on that money. Instructional support, there is two factors that are contributing to the increase in that line. The first is one that Matt had mentioned earlier, that includes the conferences and meeting lines for each of the buildings, which is in there. I believe that that's about $20,000 and change. And also included in there is the, high school previously had a field trip line that has been unfunded. And the challenge with that is that previously, our high school students typically paid for many of the field trips that they've taken. However, the high school also does take field trips that we don't require students to pay into. You know, we have various trips that the music department takes, trips for the art department to go into town to paint the murals on the storefronts that we do. There's a variety of different things that the various teams and programs participate in that we don't charge the students for, so putting money aside for some of those field trips as well. The education support services line is the AAS and ELNA line that we had spoken about. Instructional management, that increase is, that $97,000 is exclusively the increase in the BOSI's professional development line. Again, that includes things like the tri-state consortium that we were mentioning earlier, as well as additional trainings that we get through not just Orange Oster BOSI's, but PNW BOSI's and Southern West Chester BOSI's. That line is also, receives the BOSI's aid that I was speaking about, and then the increase in special education and PPS, which we will speak about now, unless you have any questions.
We spent all of our questions on the last topic.
Oh, yeah, that's it, you cashed them all in.
So, special education and PPS, we broke it down to two areas. We basically broke it down into a lot of the stuff, and then the next slide will be about tuition for our students, particularly our out-of-district students. You'll see here, there's, these numbers are flat. The only thing where you see an increase or a decrease, we basically took that 6401 line, which this current year was $326,500, and we recoded it. We had a lot of different things under the Committee on Special Education, and if anyone has ever been to a CSE meeting, there were things that made, that were being paid out of that budget line, you know, classroom supplies and things like that, that made more sense to go under a special class line, in addition to a PPS admin or the health services line, which were some, you know, physicals that we had to, or medical things that we had to pay for. So, that's basically, the 6401 was, that number from this past year was split amongst the 6100, the 6401, the 6402, and the 6409 line. And hospital instruction is another term for home instruction, but from a budgetary standpoint, that's what we call it.
So, we carried over that subcategory total that Matt just spoke about, and then we have the three additional tuition lines. To go through each of those three, the first line is the 7400 line. That line represents the costs that the school district has to cover for non-resident students who attend non-public schools within the boundaries of the school district. Because we are considered the district of location, if there's a non-public school within the boundaries of Monroe Woodbury, we're required to provide special education student, services to students who qualify in those schools. However, in providing those services, because they are non-resident students, we have the ability to be able to build back their district of residence for those services. So, any of the funds that are budgeted for in the 7400 line, even though we have to include them because the district has to cover them, we build them back to their district of residence, because that's their fiscal responsibility. The next line is the 7500 line, which is the resident tuition line, which are the costs associated with any student who is a resident student in Monroe Woodbury, who is placed in an out-of-district placement, whether it be a BOSI's placement, a residential program, or another out-of-district program, Monroe Woodbury has the responsibility of covering those costs, and all of the tuition costs are included within that line. The third line is the 7600 line, the chapter students line, similar to the 7400 line. Any student who's placed by a state organization in a private care home or agency that resides within the school district, the school district is required to provide special education services to them. However, similar to the 7400 line, we get the opportunity to build back the district of origin of those students. The students are technically considered residents of Monroe Woodbury, but because they're placed by a state agency, we can build back the district of origin from which they came from. So, the 7400 line and the 7600 line are either billed, they're both billed back to the district of residency or the district of origin of those students.
So, the 7500 line is basically somebody else billing us. It's a reciprocation issue.
It depends. Sometimes it's another school district who sends a bill to us, sometimes it might be BOSI's, because we send them to a BOSI's program, or it could be other out-of-district programs like Green Chimneys, or Center for Discovery, or any other school or placement that we send students to, we have to provide tuition for those students.
But, so we provide tuition, but then we back-bill them?
No. We.
That's number 74.
No, I'm talking about 7600.
7600, yes, that is correct.
7400 and 7600.
So, where is this money coming back on the sheets?
So, that's on the revenue side.
Okay.
Similarly, just like when I say that the money that you see is what the expenditure is dollar-for-dollar. So, even earlier when I said that we increased the BOSI's professional development line and we get BOSI's aid on that, that number reflects the actual dollar-for-dollar expense of the school district. We get the aid back in the subsequent school year, which would be revenue for the following school year, not on the current school year. How did I do with that, Patrick?
Very well, Eric.
All right, thank you. So, a quick note on the increase in the resident tuition line. There are a number of different factors that contribute to that increase. The first factor is if we continued service for any student that currently is in Monroe Woodbury, who is going to continue in the same placement in the subsequent school year, there's an increase in tuition costs. We budget for just under a 3% increase from year to year. So, a portion of that is even if just a cost to continue, if every single student remain in the same placement into the subsequent school year, there's a tuition increase that's associated with that. However, things don't always stay the same. We have students who are in out-of-district placements who graduate, students who no longer qualify for services from the school district, students who move out. So, another factor that contributes is the movement of students that come into the school district, students that are currently placed in the school district, that are pending placement outside of the school district, or students that, you know, we may have moved in in the middle of the school year that were not included in the development of this year's budget. Total, we have a net increase of 14 out-of-district students that we are projecting from the '22, '23 school year to the '23, '24 school year. So, that increase represents the cost of 14 additional students, plus the additional tuition costs for the students that we currently send to out-of-district placements.
So, 14 students cost $2 million a year?
14 students, no, that is, it's not, it's not $2 million just for those 14 students. It's the cost of students who are in placements right now, just, right now, the current budget is $14 million. If you roll over the same number of students, if the same number of students are continuing in their program next year, we budget for just under a 3% increase in tuition costs from year to year. So, it's 14 additional students net, and the reason why I can say 14 students is that is based on the item-by-item calculation of every single individual student's tuition cost. That's not a projection. Every single, if we have individual spreadsheets by program of every single service that kids receive, and it is zero-based budgeted to arrive at that calculation.
So, 3% of the 13.91 is the increase year to year, and then 10.91 is the increase in the additional students?
Roughly, right.
All right. So, just to summarize, this budget is reflective of maintaining all of our current programs and then adding things as needed. The focus on professional development for our teachers and staff members is something that Ms. Rodriguez will get into, I'm sure, when she presents her budget in a few weeks. The foundational skills and monitoring progress and understanding our students as learners, and the increase in career and tech opportunities that we're proposing, and the high school piano.
And maybe a cover.
And maybe a cover.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, it's roughly about a million per student, after 14 students, 10% of.
No, there was 14 additional, right?
Additional.
14 additional, right.
Right.
So, it's.
$2 million for 14 kids?
No.
14 additional.
So, it's.
No, this year, '22, '23, we have 183 out-of-district students currently. We're projecting for the placement of 197 students in out-of-district placements for the '23, '24 school year.
Right, so, but if the increase, it's a 10% or 11% increase on 14 million, that gives you about 1.4 million, you got 14 additional students, that's about a million a student.
2 million difference.
I mean.
By about 14.
But, but remember, but, wait, one second, wait, one second.
Because the 3.9% is an increase.
But remember, sometimes, sometimes.
3% is just the increase for.
You have to be careful about breaking it down individually like that, and here's a reason why. Sometimes we have students who change placements in the middle of the year, where a student is placed in one placement, and the Committee on Special Education meets and decides that the placement that they're in no longer is appropriate for them, and they get placed in a different placement. So, sometimes, even though there's a student who currently is within our school district, that straight 3% projection tuition increase doesn't necessarily apply to them, because they may be in a program that costs X this year, and next year they're going into a program that costs Y. So, it's not a straight, you know, there's not a straight tuition cost for every single student in the same placement across the board.
I got it.
Yep.
There's variables for every student.
Correct.
That change for every student.
Right.
Those variables, but in my mind, I'm.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
14 students.
Yeah.
You know, 1.4 million dollars.
Right.
Not that hard math.
Right.
Roughly, average-wise.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you both very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you take 3% off there, you're kind of level two, so that's about that.
1.4% of that.
I don't grant it that much.
I mean.
Say it in here.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Right.
It's going into two policies, which you'll approve on the.
I just needed the. I'm trying to go with the combined one. Okay, let's move back into. Okay, let's move back into, let's move back into the meeting. Next up is approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have policy manual. We have a motion to dissolve policy eight-four-seven-zero, home instruction, homeschooling. Are there any, and also the next one is the first reading of a policy manual update. Are there any questions on either one? Okay, may I have a motion to approve dissolution and the first reading?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Annual budget vote. Except May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three as the date of the annual meeting, budget vote and election of board members, approval of legal notice of budget hearing and vote election, appointment of chairperson and alternate of the school district election. Are there any questions on that information that was posted? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, personnel. Ms. Hock?
Thank you. I respectfully request approval of the items listed on the personnel, eleven-one to eleven-nine.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Business and financial, Mr. Cahill?
Thank you. I also respectfully request approval of the business and financial items, twelve-point-one through twelve-point-four, and then there's two additional resolutions related to our middle school auditorium renovation project under business, financial also.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cahill? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve twelve-point-one through twelve-point-five, which includes the resolutions roll call?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education and preschool special education may have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by Board of Education Committee. I will give the update first for the audit committee. The audit meeting was held on March twenty-third at eight AM. Introduction of the district claims auditor occurred at the meeting. The gentleman has fourteen years of experience as a school treasurer, eight years as a claims auditor. They did disclose that we are well below, Monroe Woodbury is at one point six percent when the items were pulled, and most of the peers are at three percent as far as error ratio or redo. The external audit RFP process was discussed, it's in moving forward, required, this is required at least every five years, it's a good practice to have to relook at your auditors. Four proposals were received. Committee will receive an invitation in April to review the recommendation. Internal audit for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three is still underway, anticipated completion by the end of the school year, and the next meeting is on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. Any questions? Okay. The next up, visitation, please.
We have had nothing to report since last meeting.
Any questions? Thank you. Policy?
Yeah, we met on the twenty-first to discuss the two policies that we voted on this evening, and we will be meeting again on April thirteenth.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? And last up, Student Board Representative search update, please, Jamel.
Currently, there's ten candidates. For anyone that's interested, please don't let that deter you. We have about forty-eight hours to get any additional applicant, applications in, because they are due on Friday. If you are interested in just a little bit more background and a little more detail on to what's involved, Jenna has a video that's been posted by Monroe Woodbury that I think is very helpful to understand the ins and outs of what it details. So if anyone is looking for a little bit of information, please watch that video, it's very well done, and thank you, Jenna, for that.
Any questions? Thank you. Next up, reports by board and central office. We'll start with Mr. Koitman.
I wanted to thank everyone who was involved in today's presentation. This was very educational, sorry about the piano questions. And everybody, have a good night.
Okay, I'd also like to thank everyone who was involved in the presentation. Also, I have to tell you, I am totally blown away by the talent in this district. I was fortunate enough to get to go see each play that was done this year, from Captain Louie, Willy Wonka, Matilda, Beauty and the Beast, and Les Misérables were Broadway quality. They were amazing. So we definitely need that new piano. Everyone have a good vacation, well-deserved, and hopefully restful, and have a good evening.
Trying to get you two or three, because if we spread the cost out, we can go...
Really?
Go ahead, Jamel.
I attended the plays, they were quite wonderful. I'd like to thank all the PTA, moms and dads, and teachers, administrators that volunteered their time to make those things happen. That's, you know, a huge undertaking, and every kid and adult gets to enjoy that, so thank you very much for that, and have a safe evening.
I want to say thank you for the presentations and for fielding all of the questions, I know that it's a lot. I'd love to say that as a mom and a tax, current taxpayer, I would say yes to everything. I think it's all great, I, I agree with what everybody has said here, the addition of the extracurricular, the addition of the sports, increasing as much as we can with some of the plays. I unfortunately was not able to see any of them this year because travel soccer ruled in my house, so I have been on the road with that for the last few, but I've tried to see every video and clip that I could online, but it is amazing that we've got some great talent here. So, I appreciate, though, that the budget is fiscally responsible because as board members, that's the biggest question that we get. So I appreciate that the monies are well-spent and that it's being looked at and monitored. So thank, I want to say thank you to the middle school today. We were able to attend their first career fair that they had, and it was a great turnout. I hope the middle school students got a lot out of it. I was there early and then had to leave, but it looked like the students were very interactive and got a lot out of it, and I know the biggest takeaway that I got is hopefully they'll have the opportunity to field stream, or streamline some of that into some electives at the high school, because we definitely offer a lot of what was in that room today. So, it's great. Thank you so much.
I think the seniors' batteries are probably getting low, so I just wish everybody a happy spring break, and have a good night.
Ditto. Happy spring break and good night.
I'm gonna use the time that the both of them didn't then, by talking very slow, sorry. So, thank you very much for the presentations, they're great as always, I mean, they are what they are. Thank you very much. The BOSI's group, I know they had to leave, but I just want to give a little bit of background. So when I was a student in Monroe Woodbury, BOSI's had more of a negative connotation, which is unfortunate, and it's the reason why myself and, and no friends of mine didn't take advantage of it. I think we'd be farther along in our careers if we did. So for children that are, children, young adults that are looking into their career, please look at BOSI's, look at their offerings, see if they have anything you're into, because they, they have a lot, they have a lot more than I did, than they did when I was a kid. So, more power to them, and, and I take that seriously regarding the career fair. I think they kind of tie in nicely together, BOSI's career fair. Plan for your future, man, it's hard out there.
Oh, don't scare them.
No, no, they should be scared, they should be scared, I'm sorry. It's hard, it's hard. Get your education, get your career in order, sorry, it is what it is. And Beauty and the Beast was incredible, my kids enjoyed it, I did as well, it was beautiful. Thank you. Suzanne said it best, so thank you.
I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the wall over there that has our athletic facilities map. I know that we've been working on that for a while, it was truly a collaborative effort between our athletic department staff, CPL architects, and Carol Spence took the lead on this, so, thank you, Carol. We have, we're very proud of our athletic facilities, and now we can show them to our visitors as well. These will be posted throughout the campus, I believe five or six different locations, and you'll, you'll see a typical "You are here" sign, and it will help people, once they get to the site, to be able to know where the athletic fields are, who's playing where, we have them listed according to sports. So for example, if you come for a JV girls' soccer game, it's listed just like that under soccer, under JV, it'll tell you the field, and they're all labeled on the site. The other thing it has is a QR code in the bottom right-hand corner that is essentially a, it's going to take you to a visitor's guide on our athletics page, so hopefully not only our community members can, can enjoy that, but visitors to our school as well.
Excellent, thank you.
So, I agree, Beauty and the Beast, Les Misérables were outstanding. I, I also went to the middle school career fair this morning, not knowing how this evening's presentation was going to go, so...
Looking for digs?
You know, it's scary out there. You know?
Spread the word, spread the word, be proactive.
You know, always gotta have a backup.
Lean on me, it's...
Well, it's, it's good to have a person by my side, though, I appreciate it. Just a quick congratulations to our science research students, they competed last week at the Greater Capital Region Science and Engineering Program. You should check out the district website and see the awards that they won. Unbelievable stuff. Have a great spring break.
I agree, a great spring break. Thank you again to everybody who, who supported that presentation. One thing was Monday night was one of my, is always one of my favorite nights here in the district, and that's the night that we get to interview current students for the Music Booster scholarships that are, that are offered. It is to see these, these students come in, they're incredibly accomplished already, but the poise with, you know, with which they carry themselves is, is really amazing. So, congratulations to all of them, and have a wonderful spring break.
So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the following people for donations to the district tonight. On the agenda, Jessica and Justin Tracy for their donation of art materials and supplies to the art department, Carolyn Berkowitz for a donation of a pearl bell kit to the music department, and Alicia Kleppis for donating a copy of her book, Francesco's Kite, to the Safar Elementary School Library. And with that, I wish everyone a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I want to thank Eric and Matt for their presentation, I thought it was very well done. I also want to thank BOSI's for coming out and presenting and answering all of your questions. I also had the opportunity to see the career fair this morning, it was really awesome. Kudos to Kathy and Karen who oversaw that, they did a very, very nice job. I also had the opportunity to see all the plays, it's amazing that these are young people, they really are, the talent that they have and the talent that they're, that is brought out by our staff is unbelievable. And I also had the opportunity to sit with the seniors who were applying for the music scholarship. We do a really good job, and I'm very proud of the staff, and I'm really proud of our students. And with that, I wish everyone a happy spring break.
Thank you. So, I want to thank you both for a really great presentation and entertaining all, all of our questions. I do also want to thank the BOSI's team, they answered our questions, they were engaged, I thought they put a nice presentation together. We just need to see if we can get more students in the program. I did attend the Les Misérables concert on Friday and Saturday, it was absolutely fantastic. It was like a Broadway production, the sets, the costumes, the acting. Really recommend that the district really come out in force for all of the plays, because the people in the high school will eventually move on to college, and the people coming up really love the encouragement to keep going with theater. I think it's really important, I want to thank Ms. Pact and Dr. Krone and the entire team for putting together such a great show, it was very well-coordinated. The, I also attended this Music Booster, I had the fifth graders, which are always great, very engaged, really fun. My partner in, you know, with the questions, Mr. Berger, was really great, too. You can tell he really connects with the students, and all of them are moving up to his school next year, so he told them to come up and say hi, so I appreciate that. Also volunteers are key, and I reiterate what Mr. Reynolds said before, we have so many boosters and clubs and other things, and without the parents' support, and even some of the kids, I see a lot of the kids come out during events, concerts, sports events, to help man tables and sell things and support, it's really important. So volunteerism is, is a great way to show community support, so I really appreciate that as well. And with that, I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy and fun spring break. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.